I didn't know that. I thought it was seven. I would prefer six thirty.
Deb, if you want to go over when you just asked me about it. Yeah. Deb has a floor. She has something to bring up. Hello?
I'm sorry, Lee asked a question, or not Lee, um, my...
Whatever.
I don't know if you got in the mail, but Austin County IDA is having a public hearing on a possible tax incentive for building on Wall Street. IDA. They weren't looking for a tax incentive. BBG Ventures, that guy's building up for the agriculture business. I think we all should be there because it's going to affect the city. They're looking for a pilot. And it's the same night as laws and rules at 6:30. September 19th. It's a public hearing that starts at 7:00. And I think it's a financial impact to the city. I really think we should be there. Because it's our only chance to push back or have questions, but this company is asking for it. With that one, section 311 to 315, Wall Street.
What was the other, um, we got two on the...
It was the same. For some reason, it's the same thing.
Now, what was it different?
Oh, mine was. Mine was the same.
It wasn't the ventures. It was something, and I can get through it. Open it and just stand it. And I meant to bring it.
There's 311, and BBG Ventures, and 311 Partners.
We got two on the list. Does anybody, can anybody look at them? I've been away.
I looked at them. They're just out there.
Yeah, I think so.
I looked at them when I was watching the scene.
But I think we should be there.
Oh, Tony have?
No, I had it at home when it was watching the scene.
But I think we should be there because it's discussing a tax break.
Can we say the time again?
But they wanted, the public hearing was on the paper for them at 7 o'clock on September 19th. We are scheduled to have something here at 7:30.
The impetus for moving laws and rules from its normal date, which is 1/22 through the 21st, is that Rosh Hashanah. So to try and accommodate the Jewish holiday, we're going to move it to Tuesday. But I'm having trouble with my reset on my Kingston email. And Marianne can't make it.
No, I said the original date works fine for me. That's what I implied.
And the 19th doesn't?
Yes and no. But my issue with that is that, I just want to put this out there. Steve asked for public safety to be moved to the 30th, and it was accommodated. President Noble asked for tonight to happen and tomorrow night to happen instead of moving it to next week, and it was accommodated. Or asking for laws and rules to be moved. I asked for laws and rules to be moved. And it was an issue with you, because the chair makes the decision. And let me finish. And it was an issue, you said, with the city clerk's office, because they would not be able to get the work done in time. So my issue is, a meeting was held on the 30th, which was Thursday. And that led Friday, and then they had Labor Day yesterday and today. So if it was an issue to move laws and rules because the paperwork couldn't get done by the city clerk's office in time, it should have been an issue when Steve moved it to the 30th as well. And I want to know why certain, everything else is being accommodated but the one I asked for. And I know why. But could you tell me why the one I asked to be accommodated could not be moved?
First of all...
Because it's the chair's responsibility to remove it.
First of all, laws and rules is not an element of the public safety. We deal with different issues.
No, it's a general question of committee meetings. Some are being moved and some are not. It's a general question. It doesn't matter what the topics are at the meetings. What it is, is that the chair decides if it can be moved. The chair requests it to be moved. And it was accommodated for everybody except my request. And the city clerk's office said they couldn't accommodate it to get all the paperwork done, so that was one of the reasons. But it was no problem to move it to the 30th last week, work Friday, be off Monday, and be here today, and everything's ready? So I don't understand.
Maybe I'm trying to answer your question.
Well, I don't want to hear that it's about what the agenda items are. It's not about that. It's about that, it's a general question of committee meetings.
It is precisely about that. I'm sorry you don't see it that way.
That's your opinion.
Okay, that's fine, but you don't get to control my answer.
I'm not controlling your answer, Lynn. You controlled that you didn't want to move a meeting for me.
You're doing the under regular business.
And you're rude.
Well, I am not being rude and unprofessional. You want to be some saint from God knows where, but no, I can't move it on the 21st. And I am a decent person.
This has been brought up before and...
And then why isn't it addressed?
Well, what is, what, the answer you want, Marion? What's going to change?
I want to know why, why everybody else can ask for a meeting to be changed and it's accommodated. I asked, I was told it could not be moved because the city clerk's office couldn't handle it and the chair didn't want to move it.
I don't know. I don't know the answer. And it's not related to what we're doing tonight.
Well, it is because they brought up about moving this meeting.
What does that have to do with tonight's call?
Because it was the discussion going on. That's why I brought it up. Deb was asking about moving it to the 19th.
If anyone has a conclusive answer, then that's fine.
But I'm telling you, why can't somebody answer?
Is this that they brought up? Go ahead, Carly.
I'll speak to it. And Marion, I did explain this to you previously. First of all, the, the original, uh, meeting in question would have been for the Thursday, which would have left only Friday to get all of the legislation written, checked by court counsel, and out to you guys by Friday night. Laws and rules, legislation generally is more complicated and does require more legal review than the majority of the stuff that comes out of public safety. And as I also told you, public safety falls on the fourth Wednesday of the month, which in almost every month ends up being that last Wednesday before the meeting. So we're used to that schedule with that meeting. So switching it that particular month, it just happened there was an extra Wednesday.
Then it was going to have to, because of being off yesterday and only having Friday to do it, that you said it was going to be a rush to get it done?
Absolutely. I mean, if I had my preference, we'd have no committee meetings that final week, honestly. I mean, if, if, if it was up to me, that would be my preference. In order to give us plenty of time to, you know, review them, go over. But that's not the way to go. So...
And that's why I asked you.
But that one day does make a difference. Being on a Wednesday as opposed to a Thursday does make a difference, because it doubles the amount of time that we have to go through the stuff.
So I don't think we'll, the chair's taking into consideration respect of all the members of the committees. That's, so... But I got your answer, Carly, via email, and I was bringing that up, that, the point of that. So that was...
Okay, thank you. Can we, can we, can we move on to Thursday?
I'm going to say this. We will move the meeting back to the 21st to accommodate both Marianne and also the issue that Deb raised.
I said either or.
I was trying to accommodate Rosh Hashanah, but that's what we'll do. We'll move it back to the 21st. There's plenty of time to do it on the record. All of the committee members will be present, and we'll forego trying to be...
Okay, so we have a public hearing.
And then we don't have to move the public here. Public here.
What?
You probably won't have a lawyer there. It's Rosh Hashanah. I can't be there on Rosh Hashanah.
Well, okay, okay. We're just like, we're trying to, Kevin, we're going to, we're going to have to do this.
I can, that day works better for me, but I'm not saying that I wouldn't move it.
I apologize. Go ahead. We'll try and figure this out. Thank you for...
What is, uh, public safety the 20th?
Public safety is the following. We were talking to the 19th or the 28th, but the 28th brings up the issue that Carly raised.
Whatever the 20th, whatever the Wednesday, the 20th, it doesn't work.
We, uh, we could do the 20th. I mean, I don't know. I mean, you, you have a member here who's...
Okay, well, that's, alright, well, there's, there's, there's no immediate answer.
No, it's not about changing. It's about that...
Alright, let's, let's move on. Let's move on to tonight.
We're living in a market where no comment.
The way committees work is the chairman, for whatever reason, wants to move a meeting. She takes a consensus of the committee members and then makes a decision, usually by majority vote of committee. And that's what's done. Just like I didn't arbitrarily say, let's change this meeting because it's Labor Day. I brought it out to the council and asked everybody what their input was. I mean, it's very...
Okay, so can we just briefly caucus laws and rules after this caucus and take a vote?
Because, no, this, it was also this state, but that's not Rosh Hashanah. Somebody put up this...
Anything you get concerned with a committee and your membership, that can make it and not make it. And even if the committee chair can't be there, then they don't want to move it? Another person wanted to step into the chair. That's all.
Sorry, but then...
So we're going to...
Let's just caucus after this.
Alright, on to tonight's resolutions. 171, um, this came out of finance on economic and community development budget. I'm not a hundred percent sure what, what this is for. If someone can explain that. I don't, I'm not really...
I have a question.
I don't really get this. Go ahead.
Maggie had provided us with a resolution that we voted on previously, where the city of Kingston took over the commission of the Livwell Commission from Cornell Quap extension. And we're reading that resolution. Nobody in there would say that we would hire somebody or speak to the Noble Foundation. So if the Livwell Commission, Livwell was still at Cornell Quap extension, we wouldn't, I don't understand why we're hiring a part-time person for a commission or a board when that's not our practice. And I don't know if we have any boards or commissions currently that have an employed, part-time employee. And it's being paid for that grant. Wouldn't that money of $25,000 be better spent to put it to the, um, issue and not to pay somebody? Because a commission and or a board, that is to make those decisions and not, I don't know if there's, is there any paying board and commission people right now? I don't believe there is.
That commission's currently in place. The commission's in place. There's...
It was voted on a couple of months ago. I don't think there's been a commission established.
The commission hasn't been established. I could send you a name of all the commissioners. In the resolution, it refers to the mayor appointing a chair. An example of something we've done is the Kingston Human Rights Commission has a paid part-time director of that.
Okay, does Climate Smart have a paid time, um, chair?
It's just being on the board. We were going to say it was...
No, it's the only, I mean, human rights is a one office that's one office person to compare to, it, it, it's like happens in Orange, just to be, but like we have Climate Smart, we have CAC, we have Vizone, we have, um, planning, we have...
I really can't speak to that.
And all of those are boards and commissions, and none of those people are paying. They all volunteer their time and make decisions. And I'm not understanding why the healthy from Cornell Quap extension would require a paid part-time decision.
So it's no longer, so Cornell Quap extension had a coalition. This is a commission of the city of Kingston. So that's a conversation I think they need to have with the mayor as far as the intentions.
But I think as what we had brought up at finance and then you sent us the resolution, I thought that the follow-up was that with the resolution, and we only got the resolution.
Sure, are you awaiting more information from me?
Excuse me?
Are you awaiting more information from me?
I knew what, in finance, you were going to send us the resolution that we voted on a couple of months ago. And the question of why we were paying a part-time employee also did come up. Because why, why it may be a zero financial impact today, it may not be next year because it'll be put in the budget. And do we have the money to pay for a part-time position on a commission and or a board, which is not our practice? So that would set the precedence for every board and commission to come and say, I want my chair paid. And I don't think that's the precedent the city wants to attack.
I don't recall you asking me to gather the information. I submitted the information. If you have a question, if you have further questions about the purpose of that commission, that position, I would suggest talking to the mayor. I could tell you that the Noble Foundation is not only a not, it's not only not a negative impact, it's actually a positive impact.
It is. I agree with that, but to pay a person...
A positive financial impact is what I meant.
I don't believe out of that money, you should pay somebody that, I've stated my thoughts.
Randy?
If I understand, your concern is that you don't want to set a precedent. All of it sounds like we have paid somebody before. But clearly, we don't...
The Human Rights Commission's...
So, essentially, so, uh, at the same time, I understand your concern. This would be not us paying for the person. So the we is not the city. The we here is they, and it's Noble Foundation. So that's no money to us.
At the moment, yes.
Sure. So that means then that the next, uh, if this position stays, if it turns out that it's not something we need, that they are able to just get the Livwell Kingston off the ground, who may need them for a year to, for the life of the grant. If for some reason they make the claim that they don't, then I think we have to come back to your issue, because I think that's a very important one. But we're not establishing precedent that the city paying for this position because the Noble Foundation paying for it.
But for the future, we are, because it's happened many, many times, and there, it doesn't need to get off the ground. Livwell Kingston is off the ground, and it's being carried over from Cornell Quap extension. So you may want to do some research on that.
So the mandate issue is required of bringing it over? I think that we're getting free money?
No, 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 not issues to bring it over. It's established already. What I'm saying is...
But it's moving from, coming out to the city, right?
And just for a point of order about the, how it was facilitated before, when it was under Cornell Quap extension, they paid a coordinator and facilitator for it. And so it is always for...
You see, I paid there. I was on, I sat on that Livwell commission.
Right. And Chris Stilson, who was in that position when she worked at Cornell Quap extension, was paid.
I think it's like when CAC had that, um, the mapping that was paid for specifically by grant, and then, and then it came to us. As long as this comes to us before we, we vote on continuing the, the work they're doing. Because I think it's similar. When that, when that time was up, we said, well, we're not paying for it, and then the grant ran out. He was, he was done. So we just used what he had. And I think that's, I think that's a pretty solid analogy in this case. I didn't realize there was no...
Well, I, I see the future. And then there's future of some other committees coming and asking for a chair to be paid. And I'm going to tell them no.
Well, if it's paid, if it's paid for by a grant or by, by, um, Noble or something, then, then that's fine, but, but yeah, we're not paying for this.
It's only to be used for the program, not to pay somebody. So what is the contracted services for that extra $25,000?
I can't speak to this with the, I think that other committee mayor I talked to.
And then $7,500 for the other.
Is anyone else comfortable with this? Because I, I, I tend to agree that maybe some more information is...
I do, so, I don't know the contracted services, but what's that?
So are you saying that you're not going to, just so I can clarify, you're not going to vote on it tomorrow?
Oh, I don't know. It's up to, it's up to the council. I, I don't...
I have to just press the contract.
Yeah, I'm just, um, I'm not sure what's, what it's all about either, and probably more information would help. Is it, is it time sensitive? I mean, if we were back in committee, it's the best.
It's somewhat time-sensitive, I mean, because the entire process in order to hire somebody is an entire process through the civil service commission.
But the money's there. There's kind of a...
Well, so there is a grant period, and I think I sent that in that email. And so the grant actually started July 1st of this year. And so, um, I don't know if we would get an extension.
Couldn't they currently, couldn't they currently...
And we have the money now.
No, they can't, because they have to go through the civil service commission to establish a register first, and so they'd have to start that.
And we have the money? We have the money. It's already given to us, right? So it's not an issue of losing the money?
It's not an issue of losing the money, but if you don't spend it at the appropriate speed, there could be concern down the line.
We didn't spend a lot of money after the... And so this, I think, falls within that, that time. Would they have the, um, questions that were asked for financing again tonight answered? So, so if civil service is getting involved, are they going to have benefits like pension, medical benefits? Part-time?
Part-time.
It's part-time. Don't get any pension or anything. It's just great salary.
I can speak to this. This is it. I can tell you it's part-time.
So that's, I need to know, because then that's money, that's going to draw that down a bit.
I'm just not an expert in personnel benefits, so that's...
But now I'm saying if that is, that draws down that money by time you go to the, for the pension and whatnot. So I'm just curious. All of a sudden, it's a civil service position, so...
Does anyone else think, and Kevin, do you know if that, that, um, position would, uh, would be eligible for benefits?
Not, 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 not.
Most part. I mean, I don't think any part of that.
No pension, no, I don't know that.
You have other information?
Any part-time position is not eligible for benefits or medical insurance, so, but other than that, I don't know.
So they have the money and they already gave, they already, um...
They have the money. It's in, yeah. And so basically, it just needs to be moved, that it needs to be appropriately stanked. I mean, there are things that have to happen. It has to, the position has to be created. They have to purchase a computer. I mean, there's, you know, as part of accepting the grant from the Noble Foundation, there is a timeline involved. And so we just want to, we're spending at the appropriate speed.
Yeah, as long as we control what happens when the grant runs out and what happens with this person, I think, I don't, I don't have as much a problem with it considered coming in. So are there any other questions on this?
Just like I said, I'll have to find out what contracted services is. And I wonder about the civil service status pension.
Yeah, I don't think that's, uh, it's fine. Doesn't sound like there would be benefits, but...
Pension's different than medical, though.
Any other questions, comments? So we'll just go to the vote, Camp Act Committee, three to two, so we have all the people here tomorrow and, um, think about what we're going to do. Any other questions, comments? Alright, let's move on. Washington Avenue signalization, also out of finance. Is this just the Mac back there on this?
Yeah, this is just the, the signalization.
Okay, any questions on this? 173. And this one is the, uh, is the sacred, uh, again.
And the 429 has a financial impact. It's over a three-year period.
Right, growing all year. Okay, and, and Chief Brown was here, and he, he did indicate that if with retirements, he's not going to replace, you know, replace positions. It'll just, this will just enable us to stay where we are after these retirements.
Apply for the gang.
Correct. Alright. The next one, this is the...
Couple of them.
This is the, um...
74, 5, and 6.
Oh, I think this is the bond one. Okay, this one is, um, okay, the Henry A. Project, Henry Street.
Yeah, you'll see, actually, the numbers are, um, they're numbered slightly different than I had originally numbered among your copies just because per court counsel, we just needed to switch around.
The section engineering?
No, 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 each, the three resolutions.
The 174, 75, 76.
Yeah, they're still the same numbers, but they're just being slightly different. The first is the authorization to bond is 174. The bond itself is 175. And then the, um...
The word is?
Implementation and funding is 176.
Okay.
I just want to comment to me.
Okay.
Um, when Kristen was talking about this at finance, um, this currently is called, um, the Henry Street Federal A. Project and sidewalk pedestrian improvement project. She had said that, um, they were thinking of also naming it to include us in the town's safe streets. But I had made a comment that night that safe streets is a totally different grant, and it can become confusing that the safe streets money was used for this, where it's not. That was just other areas throughout the school.
I think that's a good point.
So I'm just, I think because of the Henry Street Federal A. Project, that's what it's going to stay, but, um...
It was a pedestrian, pedestrian improvement project?
But, but she's going to try to put it as a safe streets project, which I understand the improvement of pedestrian sidewalks will make it safer, but it's not part of that grant.
And it shouldn't be confused as such.
It's not a salad.
Makes sense. Is everyone okay on this? Me? I know you're...
I am happy. I was worried second, but I'm happy.
177, uh, ways where treatment, um, budget transfer, zero financial impact. They have a lot of zero financial impacts, though.
What?
You should know that...
But it makes up for the difference.
Something, something.
One time billion.
You got some big words coming, I think. Okay, the next one is modification of the common council budget. This is for equipment for the legislative assistance.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Um, this is for audiovisual and computer. So what's the miscellaneous? Is which one is computer, which one's audiovisual, or what? I'm trying to figure out what's, what's what. Because I talked to other people, and some audiovisual equipment, they said, does not cost $3,500. You can get something for $500. Recording device for $500, so...
We need a computer.
The computer's $3,500.
Yeah, and video recording. It's all combined into one.
So it's $7,000 now?
No, $3,500 total.
So what, this is for $7,000?
No, you're moving...
Oh, one line to another. Okay.
But I have a question from that, because that goes along with Deb's issue here. When we cast the Senate committee, it was coming from part-time line. Now the, um, resolution says it's coming from contingency. And it's a different line item. So where's some money coming from? Is it coming from the part-time line, 5404?
Oh, you know, you know what that was?
Yeah, the recorder.
Yeah, the, um... Yeah.
Yeah, like, that's just the...
Made in my building. That was my next one.
Right, way in, and it's way in, and making...
Yeah, that's, that was my mistake. Yeah.
So which should it be?
It's going to, it'll be what's on the committee report. It's coming from the timeline to that 5404 line, not from the 5404 line.
So that'd be corrected for tomorrow?
Yeah, okay. Well, that's what's getting confusing.
Hey, any other questions, any other questions on this?
Well, I, I don't think that question was answered. A computer is needed, and it says audiovisual. And that, and it said that it lost $500, but Deb said that somebody told her an audiovisual.
Yeah, I talked to our newsman, and he said, the whole recording device he uses does not cost as much money as, you know, unless the computer is taken up $3,000 and the $500, you know, I'm just trying to figure what the breakdown is.
As with all of children purchases, our drug device, E, Cornell Akutash, is quoting it out. And so prior to any purchase, it will be quoted to ensure that we get the best price and, and best equipment needed.
So everything's...
Video also.
What's that?
So could you, so could you...
But then that was the question we're asking. Are we having somebody transcribe this? Because it's going, you're not going to put the whole video on the website. Remember, we have a discussion. You can put the whole video on the website in its entirety. Okay. And for the hearing impaired, is there going to be any kind of... Okay, I'm just saying, somebody's hearing impaired, they go on the website.
Well, we would still have, of any of the, you know, we would still have the same written minutes that we currently have.
Okay.
We're not getting rid of any of the written minutes that we currently have.
Alright, so now we have full video on the website that you can watch the whole meeting in its entirety?
I believe, I believe that's...
All the meetings are just that meeting? I thought it was every meeting. Every meeting? Right.
That's what it should be.
It should be. That's what I'm saying. It's a lot of space on the, and how long do you keep it up? Does it take up...
So there's, um, a free YouTube channel for, for governments?
What's that?
There's a free YouTube channel for governments, and so that's to help with the data storage issues that you're bringing up.
Okay, so, and who's recording that? Audiovisual?
Our legislative assistants.
You're going to be, you're going to be having camera like Clark's doing?
I'm going to be doing the meetings that I cover already.
So you'll be running a camera, then?
Yes, I'll, I'll set up the equipment and record the meetings and then upload the audio and visual.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions? Okay, the next one is the memorializing, I think, memorializing resolution. I noticed, um, we have made change at a committee, um, um, our continued support for Paris Agreement. And we, at a committee, we agreed to...
No, I know. I mean, the, I mean, the change at the, at the end of the day, on my copy, we did take out the Donald Trump and it says... So will have that corrected tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my other question. Any, anyone else? Any questions on this? 180, um, the chief, James K. Wiggins Jr., police headquarters. Family was here to, um, he asked that we remain the police station as their, our chief. And are there any questions on this?
So I just have a question. It was something that came up in the past. It was, um, actually by Matt Dunn previously. It was about the Cordo naming of the street, Hawn Street. And I remember Matt, um, was adamant about not studying the press and so naming these things all over the place. So this is, I mean, I'm not against it, but I'm just, I remember him bringing that up. So he said that, you know, things are going to continually get named, 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 and it's not the way that the city wants to go. He had asked that, I remember. So I didn't know, because...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's probably not a discussion for today, but, um...
I was not against it, so...
You know, I was thinking, um, even as we've been doing these, I didn't know if it made more sense to, to put it before, like, the vote. And even when we, when we do want to renew something, but that, I don't know, I might be going, going too far. But, um, any other comments on that? Me? Go ahead. Arm wrestle for, go ahead, Steve.
I would disagree with Matt on that. I mean, I, I think we owe it to the people who have provided a service to the community such as James Riggins. I think it's, I think it's appropriate that we honor him in some way. I don't have a problem with naming things after individuals that really contributes to the city well-being. I mean, I.
I don't, oh, I don't either.
I'm just looking at. You're just quoting Matt and I disagree with you.
Yeah, because it defines.
I don't disagree with you.
Right.
Phil, I can just jump in from you.
Jump in.
It was a policy adopted at private areas alluding to that outlined specific criteria that had to be considered. What we discussed at the public safety meeting was that, you know, Chief Riggins met all the criteria that were outlined in the policy and that rather than holding this up, you know, that each individual member of the council could go back between now and tomorrow night and look at that policy and just confirm whether or not they believe that the chief meets those criteria. We just didn't think there was a need to have a, you know, a long discussion about each criteria with relation to the chief because you're all going to make that decision anyway.
Thank you, because I wasn't at the meeting on last Thursday, so I was just looking at this.
I think part of, part of Matt, part of Matt's issue as well was the, part of that town, the henchey, the prom night or, or his henchey. And I think at that time, we didn't have.
Anything.
The thing in place in which, you know, so he.
Like I said, I'm not, I do have.
But I do remember him also saying that, though.
Randy? Could you send us all the policy? That'd be great, because I mean, I.
Yeah, I can send it up the day of the, of that meeting, but yeah.
The important thing is to wait at least a certain amount of time.
And that's in there.
It is, it's, they have any there? A certain amount of time.
It's all, it's all in there and, you know, I think, obviously.
And, and, you know, if you look at it and you think it should be more, you know, if you think there should be changes, I mean, we have a completely different council now who, if you want to make it, you know, more difficult or.
And the family was paying for the lettering, they were paying for the plaque.
Right.
I just remember something being, I thought that to pay some.
No, that's a good point. All right.
If I can say one last thing.
Go ahead.
I do remember some things being said about Doug and I knew Doug very well, you know, and I think they did, you know, as soon as he was killed in action, people were already wanting to start naming things after him. And I think, you know, maybe you should hold it off for a little while. And I think the time you have been deceased comes into play.
I think that was one of that, that's more than, a year, I think it was, something. It was almost three years, I was a three times.
It was, yeah, it was.
Yeah, it's a fair amount of years, yeah, I think so. Because then you take the emotional component out of it and then look at the, you know, the big picture.
Okay, then we'll, I think that we have done something.
Okay, 181, came out of, who that came out of? Yep, this was the reappointment of Jane Perry to the Board of Assessment. Any questions, comments on that? We had a skeleton crew voting on this one, I don't know if you were there.
That's true.
Still okay with that, they could turn fast if someone didn't like that, okay, we're good there. Next one, repealing handicap parking on Clinton Avenue. We like those.
Yeah.
Who commented? I didn't even ask you the answer. That's the yo-yo, that's the yo-yo handicap parking spot.
But then we moved it to Holland.
Yeah, we asked, the next one, we're the.
Go ahead, try and.
Handicap parking on Holland Street.
I know.
184 handicap parking on Sherman Street. The next one is a Mendingo parking on Cornell Street, where we.
A lot of blew out when that was the other day when I was there.
Yeah, this was when we, when we changed the parking on the opposite side, Cornell Street by the post office, we, we failed to.
But they weren't even, they weren't even, they wouldn't pay attention to the no parking signs either that were right there. They were knocking over the cones to park there. It was.
I stopped there today, there was four cars parked on.
And the no parking, so it's got to be enforcement, so we can.
Always, always comes down to enforcement, we can do what we can do.
Well, I don't think enforcement would have fined, I think it's a change that, because it's.
People aren't used to it, probably not looking.
But this is not.
I was surprised.
And there's no parking, I know there's no parking.
Yeah, you know, you get used to it.
Cement.
We haven't talked since.
It's cement.
I wonder why. Do not back up.
Those speed humps with nails. But that was, every time, it was.
Next one is adding a stop sign on Lucas Avenue at Lucas and Green. That's made this intersection where people, where the, it looks like the wrong.
Almost.
That's.
Yeah, because they used to.
Is everyone okay with that? It looks good on there?
Yes.
Offering the traffic flow.
They have family, they have big, people.
And the next one has several pieces, we're adding a crosswalk.
Oh, yeah.
At St. Joseph Church, yield to pedestrian signs, installation, yield bar, pavement marker across Main Street and no parking, I'm sorry, yeah, no parking zone on Main Street in front of the church. Obviously that will not impact funerals, not going to ticket cars, purses in front of the church for funerals. And then again, that just gives more visually, maybe just come out of walk, come out of.
Didn't they redo this?
No, it was an executive order or something, now we have to make it.
Oh, I mean, it sits there, yeah.
Yeah.
This is just to make it official. Executive order is only good for, what, 30 days? This makes it, puts it on the books. Next one, the Pike Plan debt and maintenance charges, elimination of.
I have some questions.
You want to speak to this?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Here, if anyone's ready for it.
The thing is, I was trying to verify some information with the controller and how far does this go where it says maintenance charges? Now, this is paid for with some, if not all, grant money and matches, et cetera, and I don't believe, is this allowing the business owner with maintenance to tear down their canopy at all? Because if it does, it can't happen because it was paid with grant money and until, and then is the city assuming, I have a bunch of questions that I had sent out to John, him and I have been going back and forth with it. So I was a yes vote out of committee because I was still in on finance, but I don't know if I will be allowed.
Please want to give the, those, the property the right to then do whatever they want regarding that.
Right, with the.
As opposed to just having.
Kevin's shaking his head no, so I'm not sure what that.
Kevin, one if you want to.
City's still going to be responsible for the maintenance and there's a certain process that we have to go through to get the approval from the state, from the government in order to take the structure down.
So it's just eliminating that they wouldn't have to pay for the.
They're no more than.
We would pay for maintenance and, and the maintenance would have to be approved by the city.
Correct.
Because that would affect the grant, correct? Is that why?
Yeah, we have to pay it back, I never heard what, that's true.
In order to, in order to avoid having to pay any type of fees associated with the grant, there's a process that we have to go through to get their approval in advance.
So it's staying intact, at least we're sure of that.
It's not coming down anytime soon.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Okay, the next, we have two local laws, the first reading and a.
They're both first reading?
They're both first, first readings.
Yeah.
First one is the adopting chapter 336, the sanitation of weeds. Basically we're reducing the timeframe from 30 to seven days and 336.2 for notice of violations. This we passed last month, but it passes a resolution, has to be a local law, so we need two readings of this local law.
And they may vote in November?
We will vote, what, no?
October.
Yeah, first readings tomorrow, then October, we'll vote on it. All right, so there's no, no discussion at council until following, following month. As an aside, Lynn, I think the talk, you know, I think it's, I think you had a good idea at that, at the meeting to, to address some of the, some of the definitions that aren't, aren't part of this because this is already in place, but I think that, I think going forward, you know, we have enough time between now and from when things start growing again, that we can, we can get a good definition and get, you know, our agricultural people involved to get who are more knowledgeable in this, so I think going forward, I think that would be a good, good project for laws and roll. I think sending communication also, I don't know if that was on for next month, I know we talked about it, but I think that's still a good idea to, to go forward with that so